Welcome, everybody, to our Planning Board meeting, July 4, 2023. It's just a little past 4:30, and I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Do we have any declarations of conflicts? Seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda? Moved by Counselor Buck, seconded by Bobby Kenny. All those in favor? You okay with that, Rosemary?
Yes, fine, in favor.
Okay, great, thank you. And an adoption of the minutes that are in your package from June 5? Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by... Okay, great, Paul Conley. All those in favor? And you're okay with that, Rosemary?
In favor, yeah.
Great. Now, do we have any business arising from those minutes? Yes, Counselor Buck, go ahead.
I don't even know whether I'm allowed to ask a question about STRs because I'm in conflict, but I'm just wondering if, if I can, I don't even know. I'm not really asking anything about it, I'm just wondering if there's any update on where the licensing and, you know, I know the summary proceeding bylaws in the hands, as of the last minutes, are still in the hands of Cox and Palmer, and that would have been a month or so ago. I'm just wondering if there's any update to be provided, or... And again, I don't even know if I can ask that question because I'm...
Well, you asked now, so I'll give you an update. The quick answer is there's no, there's no further update to date. We are busy trying to fill the vacancies in the Planning Department. And once Eleanor gets a lot of that sorted, then we can start working on the STR file along with our official plan. But as far as we know, everything is still targeted for the October deadline to have the summary offense ticketing and the licensing bylaw rolled out.
Just on the official plan side of things, we were originally, again, going back to, we were originally targeting June 19th to 22nd as possible follow-up dates, I guess, if you will, for the follow-up consultation, follow-up public consultation to the previous public consultation meetings. So are we any further along in terms of where we are when those dates might potentially be held, knowing that we are, again, going through, and I'm fully cognizant of the fact that we have the, we're undergoing the staffing in the, in the Planning Department? So just wondering if there's any further update on when those might be.
Sure. Thank you for your question, Counselor Buck. I don't have any specific updates. I do know that this is something that is probably going to be looked at again in the fall with, with an additional round of public information sessions and consultation periods. But if Eleanor has anything additional that you would want to add to that, that would be great. Thank you, CAO Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we know that there are gaps in the plan based on some of the consultation we've done already. Currently, we have the plan on hold until we do staff up, so it's anticipated that we will have more traction on it in the fall, which is actually a better time to go out and consult rather than middle of summer as well. So we're still deciding, and with our new staff coming on, likely what will happen will be filling some of the gaps, consulting with the development community, which was something we hadn't quite done yet, and then come back out to the public again in the fall. Thanks.
Still require staffing to do that consultation with the development piece in the interim?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. You're good with that, Counselor Buck?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, we can now move on to our reports. And the first report that we have is for a Lot 160 Fairdale Drive, PID 192153, and it's a request to rezone this lot and from medium-density mixed-use residential zoning to apartment-residential. And it will also require an official plan amendment, and I'll turn it over to Laurel to provide us a report. Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The property is located in Montgomery Heights, right here, subdivision, and it's a new residential subdivision that's grown over the past five to seven years in the area of East Royalty. The property is bounded to the north by R2 West Zone, low-density residential, to the east by R2 West Low Density Residential as well, to the south by property-zoned Open Space and Splendid Drive, so down here, and to the west by MUR, Medium Density Mixed-Use Residential Zone. So I should note that the open space isn't shown on this plan yet because it is on the concept plan, but it hasn't been turned over to the city yet, but it is open space. So the property is currently zoned mixed-use, or medium-density mixed-use residential, and it's vacant on developed land totaling approximately 7.9 acres. The property owner has requested to rezone the property to allow for apartment residential. The applicant is proposing to further subdivide the lot into six lots to accommodate approximately 32 residential dwelling units on each lot. And I will just flip through to the subdivision plan. The property was zoned mixed-use residential under the East, under the East Royalty Master Plan, which is, this is a portion of the concept plan that was included in the East Royalty Master Plan. And the medium-density mixed-use residential zone was intended to create a mix of housing topologies to allow for multiple housing choices within one area. The intent of the MUR zone was to provide housing options for people at various stages of their lives, and for this reason, 15% of the land within an MUR zone was permitted to be institutional uses such as community care and nursing homes. However, the bylaw does state that if 15% of the land is allocated to institutional uses, it is not, and it's not used, it can be reallocated to other uses such as semi-detached townhouses and single-detached dwellings. So the neighborhood has seen considerable growth over the past five to 10 years, and when Montgomery Heights subdivision was proposed, the full build-out was expected to be approximately 20 years. However, given the demand for housing over the last five years, the areas, I'm sure you're all aware, the area bounded by McWilliams Road, East Royalty Road, and St. Peters Road, it's almost reached full build-out. In this area, the city, there's been a demand for apartment dwellings as well as other forms of medium-density housing, and the property is within close walking distance to an elementary school, parkland, and open space. So there's the elementary school here, we have parkland here, and then this concept plan does show where the open space is located. That wasn't shown on the zoning map. So the immediate neighborhood, it's developed with a mix of townhouses, semi-detached, and single-detached dwellings. And I've listed in the report sections of the official plan to be considered when assessing this application, such as compact urban form and infill development, as well as efficient use of infrastructure and public service facilities, housing needs in variety, and locating residential densities on available, on the availability of municipal services, education facilities, recreation, and open space amenities and transportation routes. The official plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choices, and housing choices within neighborhoods are important as they provide housing variety for people at various stages of their lives. Although this area of East Royalty would not be considered a mature neighborhood as the subdivision has developed over the past five years, the area supported various forms of medium and low-density development. Allowing apartment dwellings on this property would provide more housing options within the neighborhood and increase density. So if you'll just take a look, these were the areas that were designated for apartment dwellings, so we really only have three within the whole neighborhood. Notwithstanding, when the East Royalty Master Plan was developed, it was identified that as the area grows, people, and the people age, there should be areas that are zoned to allow for uses such as community care facilities, nursing homes, and assisted living. This was to allow people to remain within their neighborhoods when they were not able to stay in their homes. So although the mixed-use residential zone specifically stated that 15% of the land could be allocated to institutional uses, it did not require it. The regulations gave an option to include these uses. It should be noted, though, that if the property is rezoned to R4B, the zone steps down to R3T Medium Density Townhouse Development, and this zone also allows for institutional uses. And the neighborhood does already support moderately higher density as there are townhouses and some multi-unit development to the south of this property. There are also amenities in the area such as an elementary school and open space, and there are, there is Mel's Convenience Store as well. So it isn't really a large shopping district, but there are services that support a neighborhood. The city transit system can also be accessed in the area. So I have included within the report a summary of the positive attributes, neutral attributes and shortcomings, and they're in your reports. And basically, the lot, in conclusion, the lot is substantial, it is a large parcel. The current MUR zoning does allow for a mix of housing choices ranging from low-density to medium-density development. However, in East Royalty, there are only a few properties that permit higher-density development. If the property were rezoned to allow for apartment dwellings, it would provide more housing within, in the neighborhood, and given the proximity to services and amenities, it is an appropriate site to locate higher-density development. If it was rezoned, we would also have to look at allocating the correct land use buffers around the site, so if it were adjacent to any lower-density development, we would have to buffer those properties. So it's staff's opinion that the proposal does meet many of the technical requirements for locating higher-density development within a neighborhood, and we feel that the proposal has merit, and we're recommending it to proceed to public consultation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Laurel, for your report. I can open it up to the floor now. If anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer, and if I'm not able to, I can defer them to Laurel. So go ahead, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to support public consultation for sure. I think public consultation is really, really important piece in the process, but as someone who lives in this area, I can tell you that you're right. In the last five years, a subdivision that was supposed to take 20 years to develop is near its capacity in five years, and it's been a huge shift and change with not a lot of other things in place for the residents. They're still waiting on safe pathways, they're still waiting on many things that we have said we were going to do when we supported this. on many things that we have said we were going to do when we supported this. One of the positives identified is the elementary school, and I don't know if there's been consultation there. We met trying to get a safe crosswalk to this new subdivision for the little kids to cross the street. And they're claiming that they're at capacity now with no room to expand. So there's lots of bigger factors that really, I appreciate we're in a need of housing, but we're, housing, 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 and forgetting about all the supports that need to be in place in order to support the housing that we're bringing in. So absolutely, we'll support public consultation, I guess. Is this going to be for the July meeting, first question? And second question would be, I know we only have to notify within 100 meters, but I would appreciate some sort of something that I could walk this neighborhood. We had discussion. A lot of these people purchased their properties around here with the understanding that it would be, you know, a long-term seniors home or whatever that would possibly be coming in here, not six times 30 to 200 apartments plus living in between their single-family or multifamily homes. So.
Yes, Councilor McCabe. If you'll see on the concept plan, there were, there was additional land allocated for the school. So that, there should be room for expansion for the school when the, the school is ready to do so. I know there are pathways that have been dedicated to, for walkways for the kids to get to the school. And I, I would have to confirm with the manager of Parks and Recreation, but I know he was working with the developer, and they did work out a deal where the developer was to pave the walkways and deed them over to the city. So I think there was, there was some recent activity on that in the past few months. But I do understand your concern. It is quite a, a, a lot of density. But if it were seniors housing as well, it would be probably similar density. So it's just, it's just a different form of housing. But that zone does allow for, for seniors housing as well if it is rezoned to that use. And maybe one of the things we can speak to the developer about is maybe some of this is allocated to, specifically to seniors, and then some for higher-density development. It's just a thought.
And I, I know I met with the developer with Public Works and stuff just last week. And I know with cost of everything and stuff, they're not as excited to roll out the original plan, I don't believe, for some of the stuff that's been discussed previously. But again, you know, it goes to when, when we've changed. We still have Norwood Road extension that's not developed and finalized. We have two roads in and out. We have an awful lot of increase in traffic out here that I just feel like if we keep pushing more and more without putting things in place to support it, it's just going to create a mess like some of the other areas over there. There are lots of areas of apartments and stuff, maybe not right in Montgomery Heights, but if you cross the pond and Lena Court, and we're inundated with apartments. I appreciate we need to develop and find homes and, and do this. I just think that we're, it's, we're kind of pushing the envelope, I think, for many.
Thank you, Councilor McCabe. Just curious, has the report been to Public Works yet in terms of looking at the whole traffic flow when, when this, if this expansion does follow, follow along in the process after public consultation? Has it, has it gotten to that stage yet where, where the other departments have reviewed this plan yet? Or is it still just in our planning department stage?
It's still in our planning department stage. But when we did the East Royalty Master Plan, we did do extensive traffic reviews. So this proposal wouldn't be very much different from when our original traffic proposals and projections allocated at that time.
Thank you, Laurel. Anybody else for questions? Oh, go ahead, Bobby Kenny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Laurel, the subject property looks to be surrounded by lots, some of them fronting on Fairdale.
Yes.
Are those lots built on now, or are they vacant lots?
Some of the ones to the north, I don't believe, are, are built on. Montgomery's, this part of Montgomery is pretty much complete. The parkland area has been allocated out. I believe we have some development along here. And we've currently got a, we have a subdivision proposal in for this year for, further over this direction. So.
So when you say they are developed, are they single houses or apartments?
There's a mix. The whole, the whole development is a mix of, flip to the zoning map. I don't have the building that's on it. But it's a mix of townhouses, semis and singles. The whole MUR zone, it allows for a mix of housing topologies. It wasn't meant to be one form of housing. It was meant to incorporate various types of housing. So it would be like more of a neighborhood. So we weren't just, you know, just doing one form of housing within the East Royalty area. We're providing housing options.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. And I think Councilor McCabe had asked, if this does proceed to counsel for recommendation for public consultation, you were curious of the date. It wouldn't be in, our public meeting is next week, so it wouldn't be.
No.
Yeah, yeah. No, it wouldn't be until the next one, which would potentially probably not be till September.
Yeah, we're probably looking at August or September.
Right.
And would I be able to have access of notification of something that I would be able to make sure that those, because a lot of these people are new to the community. I just want to make sure that every person has the rights.
I think you could probably get something done through comms, yeah, in conjunction with the planning department.
Or just get me a copy of your public notice that I could at least bring out.
And it's a matter of just taking this out, gauging the public at this stage. Maybe this isn't what the community wants, but maybe, I mean, it has been, I believe, what, eight years since the East Royalty Plan? So, you know, people's attitudes might have changed since then. People may have moved from the community. You have new residents, and there is a demand for housing. So we're in a totally different housing situation than we were at that time. So it's just a matter of, you know, seeing how people feel about the proposal. And I mean, if they don't, then they still have the opportunity for senior housing.
Hundred. And I'm all in.
And the MUR zone that's currently in place. So, I mean, they can, you know, they can still develop townhouses, semi-detached and singles, or they can develop a percentage of it as seniors housing. So they do have options, but it's a matter of gauging the public.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Laurel? If not, there is a recommendation from the planning staff that, that we, staff's recommendation is to proceed to public consultation. So is there an appetite to move that? Okay, moved by Councilor Buck, and seconded by Bobby Kennedy, Kenny, sorry, that we will proceed to council for council's final approval on public consultation. All those in favor?
Sorry, are we, we're voting to take this to council and ask them to approve for public consultation?
That's, that's correct.
Yes, sure.
Yep. All those in favor? Yep. Rosemary?
Support.
Okay. So we have unanimously supported the, moving this file along to council for their, for, to see whether or not they recommend we go to public consultation. Okay?
That could get on our July meeting for, for, to move to public consultation, correct?
No, our public meeting is next, is, is only next Wednesday. So there wouldn't be enough time to get the notices out.
No, no, just to move, this vote to move to council.
Oh, yeah, this, this vote will go to council for Monday.
Yeah, right.
But it won't go to the next week's public meeting, no.
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Our next.
Our next agenda item is 8 St. Martha's Court, Lot 4, PID 492405, also presented by Laurel. And this is a request for approval of the working site plan and building plans to confirm it is consistent with the approved development concept plan for St. Martha's Court and to remove the requirement for design review as per council's resolution on November 13, 2018. Design review was required until a development concept plan was approved. So over to you, Laurel.
So I'm going to be a little less formal with this one, just to, to kind of describe it a bit more. This proposal was a CDA request. It was a rezoning request back in 2018. And a portion of the properties were rezoned to CDA, and some of the land was already zoned CDA. At the time, St. Martha's, or St. Dunstan's, applied to rezone the property and have a concept plan approved. They didn't have full working drawings of their concept plan at the time. And then they come back at a later stage with a concept plan. So because they weren't completely established, and they were, they were looking to sell lots. St. Dunstan's aren't really developers. They're more landholders, and then they, they sell land. There was a, a deal, so to speak, worked out with them through council to approve their concept plan in the provision that they undergo design review. Now, in the CDA zone, there's a process that's followed. So the concept plan gets adopted, and development agreement is signed. It, it's approved by council. And when a developer comes in with their building proposals, they're to submit their working drawings for the buildings and the site plans. And then those working drawings and site plans are sent back to Planning Board for confirmation on staff's recommendation that they meet the, the, the concept plan that was proposed. So this is the concept plan that was submitted in 2018. And you can see the two buildings here. And here. So this is Lot 2. And then subsequent, they also refined it, and they submitted these plans for the two buildings. And you can see them also here on the plan, Phase 2 of the development. They've, they're looking to have Lot 2019-3 and 2019-4 confirmed for development. So basically, they're asking that those two lots within the development, which is 2019-4 would be here with this building, and 2019-3 is this building. They're basically asking that those two, those two buildings be confirmed so that they can move ahead with their development. Staff has reviewed it, and we feel that what they're proposing is in general alignment with what was approved at the time. This is the proposal for building, for 2019-4, and this is the proposal for 2019-3. This is the working site plan. So this is the drainage and the servicing plan, and also showing the walkways and driveways, parking, et cetera. The building elevations. So in general, the applicant, there was 88 units proposed for those two buildings on the site. And the applicant is proposing to, to, I think it was, locate 45 units on one and 45, 3 in another. So, and 43 on, on the other lot, which would be 2019-3. So it's the same amount of units. They just kind of split the amount of density up instead of 44 and 44. Staff feel that this is in general alignment with what was originally proposed, and we're recommending for approval. And with this, we're asking that the requirement for design review be rescinded because it's redundant on what was, what the normal practice would be for a CDA zone. So normally, we would have these plans confirmed through the public meeting. The development agreement would be signed, and then staff would review them and recommend it to the board, and it would go on to council. Requiring the design review for this is, is another layer on top of what normally wouldn't be required in a CDA zone. So we're asking that that requirement also be rescinded from the original approval from council in 2018. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for your report, Laurel. Does anyone, oh, go ahead, Councilor Buck has a question.
Yeah. The current unit that's there, how many units are in that building?
Which one?
The one, like, the, they currently have one, it would be basically in behind where those, the other two units are being proposed, right? There's one kind of up, you got that street coming in on the, isn't there one on the left hand, right around there?
These two, there was two 24-unit buildings on this property. And I would have to check on the ones that were along Mount Edward Road. I believe there was townhouses approved on that property. Phase 3 of the development hasn't gone through for approval yet. It'll be going to a public meeting at a later date.
Okay, so that other one is 224. They're two separate units, are they? They're not one?
Yeah, it was supposed to be 148-unit building, and then they come back in 2019 and requested an amendment to split the two buildings in two.
Right. And the style, I mean, it's one thing to look at these renderings on here. The style would be similar to what the other ones that were built there on the left-hand side here that are currently there?
Uh.
Design is very similar?
I wouldn't be able to tell you what the design is on these. I haven't worked, I haven't worked on that project.
Okay.
I've just kind of come into this, this development recently. It was another planner's project. But I will tell you that on top of what the, the requirements for design review that the city requires, St. Dunstan's also did develop their own set of design review requirements restrictive covenants. So they have some pretty strict covenants in place and what they wanted for design within their development. So what they are allowing in there is, is fairly high-quality development.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? No questions, okay. So is there, you need us to support staff's recommendation to remove the, the design review component from this project, is that correct?
Yes, and for Phase 3 as well, for both Phase 2 and Phase 3.
And then that to go on to council for, for?
For approval.
Okay.
And also to accept the working site and building plans for Phase 2 of the development.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, do I have anyone that would like to move that resolution? Moved by Councilor Beck? Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Paul Conley? Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor? Rosemary?
Support.
Okay. So everyone is in support of that to move on to council. So, thank you. Okay, folks, that was it for our reports. An introduction now of new business. Seeing none, can I get somebody to move the adjournment? Moved by Bobby Kenny, seconded by Paul Conley. Those in favor? Great, unanimous. Thank you, folks. Enjoy your evening.